As required by the Open Public Meetings Act and the Annual Notice of Meetings, a copy was posted on the Township website and a notice of this meeting was sent to the Sentinel and a copy was posted at the Franklin Township Municipal Building. Please stand for advice.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we're going to have Mr. Baralys swear in the reappointed members to the board.
Andy and Russell, you have your papers?
Oh, yeah.
It will make it formal. We'll have you stand up and swear in. I say your name.
I solemnly swear. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties as a member of the Council of Franklin Zoning Board. Perform all the duties as a member of the Fracture Township Zoning Board.
Do the best of my ability. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same
and to the governments established in the United States and in this state. Under the authority of the people, so help me God. Under the authority of the people, so I'll take that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, at this time, I would like to ask for nominations for a zoning board chairman.
I nominate John Gray.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garfalo?
Yes.
Mr. Glacius?
Yes.
Mr. Decezary?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Mr. Hannel?
Yes.
Chairman Gray.
Yes, thank you very much, gentlemen. Merry Christmas and happy new year. Let's open the nominations for our sources.
I nominate.
Motion by Dana Decezary.
Second.
Second by Ross Leal, I think. Who have a very important nomination to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
Second then. Second by Dana.
He is second.
You can do Mr. Voice vote on the closing.
And roll call for the...
You don't have to do a roll call.
That's all. Do we not do roll call?
No, you don't have to. You don't get to do it.
Voice roll call.
What we normally do is say the motion on the floor is actually to close. So you would, all in favor for that? Okay, you did that already. Okay. And then you're still doing all in favor for the appointment.
Okay, there is a motion to appoint. My name is our source. Motion by Dana. Second by Mike Garfalo. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Board Secretary. Motion to open up the nominations for Board Secretary. There is a motion to do that. Our nominations for Board Secretary. I'll nominate. Congratulations. Second.
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There's a motion to appoint that's ready to our...
I make that motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay, open the open nominations. That will be a motion to open nominations for our engineer and planner. And I'd like to nominate Dave Shite from Shaper, Nassau, I should.
I get that.
Second by Decezary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Attention. Okay, now move to appoint.
I make that motion.
Motion by Dana Decezary. Second. For this is for our engineer planner, Dave Shitey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, our official depositor. Motion to...
I didn't have that.
I know you didn't have to that.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion.
I think it's just one, isn't it?
No, we do.
One back.
He just did one.
This is a motion to appoint the new president of the legislature. Second by Ken Ketchum, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the calendar meeting dates for 2024.
I make that motion.
So just so you know, there's no meeting on this for July. And it's the first Tuesday, except for June 5th is a Wednesday and November 6th is a Wednesday because of the elections.
Okay, we did away with July.
Yeah, we did that last year. Yeah, seemed to work out.
Okay. Motion to approve the calendar dates. Second by Mike Garfalo, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the official newspaper.
I make that motion.
And then we have two for that.
Right, the way our residential leads, they can use either. They don't have to use both, they can use either, so they have that option.
All right, the motion by Dana Decezary to approve the Central Boston County and South Louisiana. Glacius, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that it?
I think it's...
Vice Chairman? Vice Chairman. All right, sir, we'll open the nominations for Vice Chair. I nominate Richard Glacius. Second by Ross Leal. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion to...
I make that motion.
Motion to approve the... Vice Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, now let's have a real decision. Back to our regular meeting. Did everybody review the minutes of the meeting in December?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. First rule, wait for the record to all. Ross Leal, you're going to give us some...
Yes.
And by time it was here, I'm still going to keep our ordinance, Justin Felici and Andy. Okay. First on our agenda tonight is... Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the December meeting? Motion by Dana Decezary. Second by Mike Garfalo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we have two items on the agenda tonight. First is RLS Real Estate of Newfield, New Jersey. Mike, are you in order?
Yes, and before you do that, if you want to swear in, Dave, for the entire year, for the government, if I'm here. Yeah, swear in one time. I do. Yes, good notice has been made.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year to everybody. My name is Leo Manos. My real first name's Elias, E-L-I-A-S, last name M-A-N-O-S. The attorney who filed the application is Chris Vasenda, so to avoid any confusion, I'm covering for him tonight. He had a scheduling issue, but I'm representing RLS Real Estate of Newfield NJ, Roman numeral two, LLC, with respect to the property located at 1246 Dutch Mill Road, which is block 5602, lot 24. It's in your residential agricultural zone. We're here tonight seeking a major site plan approval and use variance approval. Whether you call it a major site plan or amended site plan, I'll leave that to the discretion of your board solicitor. There's really no difference. Just very briefly, and by way of background, this site is about nine acres, was initially approved back in 2003, and it's a four-phase development. There was a use variance, major site plan for basically warehouse buildings for a family-owned and operating cold storage business. Again, it was a four-phase approval. There's been some subsequent applications over the years, the most recent of which, about a year ago, we came back to expand the warehouse building, a 221 by 235-foot expansion of one of the warehouse buildings. It looks like that was probably, my reading of it, was covered under the 2003 approval in the four phases, but due to some stormwater management changes, they came back. They got that approval. That was a year ago. Everything that was approved is built and operating on the site. And what we're here tonight for is for that site plan approval and a use variance to add two CO2 tanks, four recovery units, and there's a roof canopy over the recovery units, and then there's an operating line. I have Mr. Philippone, our board engineer, our engineer tonight, the principal, Mr. Leo is also here, to the extent he needs to answer any questions, but what I'd like to do is have Mr. Philippone sworn. He'll explain what we need to do, put some proofs on, and hopefully be brief.
Yes, I do. Steven Philippone, professional engineer, professional real planner, certified municipal engineer, 5 Cambridge Drive, Ocean View, New Jersey.
Okay, and, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding Mr. Philippone's been before the board on numerous occasions and his credentials are acceptable. Okay, Mr. Philippone, you prepared the site plan for the board tonight?
I did.
And you're familiar with the site?
Very familiar.
And you've been involved in some of the prior approvals for the site?
I believe 18 different applications for this site.
And you're familiar with the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
All right, why don't you just walk the board briefly, using whatever exhibits you have, and explain what we like to do?
There's a lot of color in this plan. Leo's own, the two houses that front on Dutch Mill Road. Years ago, we used to access this property by Dutch Mill Road. The town requested that we change the access over to Main Road. We've done so, so there's no activity on Dutch Mill Road. So tonight, we're here for, there's an enlargement here. There's some equipment to make dry ice. We're asking for the placement of two horizontal tanks, seven foot six inches by 10 feet high, 60 feet or 66 feet long, and a piece of equipment that will generate dry ice. Right now, dry ice is brought in to the site with a truck, so with the development, with the manufacturing of dry ice on the site, there's actually going to be less traffic coming to the site. So the dry ice is mechanical equipment that I submitted as part of the site plan, a tank and some recovery unit equipment, and it's a mechanical process. So what we're seeking tonight is to place these two tanks and this mechanical equipment over top of an asphalt area, where we remove the asphalt, place concrete foundation, place the two tanks, place the equipment, and the remainder of the equipment actually is inside the, one of the buildings. This was the first building on the site when I first met Tony Leo, and this was a mushroom building. This was the very first time I met, 1986. So this was once a mushroom building, but now this is part of the storage building for the whole process. And there's room in that building, that's why we're placing it there. It's a very small application. We need three waivers, a waiver from curbing, sidewalk, and landscaping. This is a mechanical equipment that you won't even see from Dutch Mill Road. As I mentioned, we're actually going to reduce the traffic to the site. It's going to be a pretty mild development. It will not generate noise, light, vibration, odors, sound. It'll be pretty inert once it's constructed, and that's basically the application for tonight. What are we freezing? I don't know. Russell's here. I don't know. That's a good question.
I'm sorry? CO2. Yeah, carbon dioxide. So basically, so like, do I need to be sworn in or anything?
I don't think you swore.
Okay. Yes. Russell Leo, 14 King Court, New Field, New Jersey. So as Mr. Philippone was saying, you know, we've been purchasing dry ice for a large customer of ours for years, for our e-commerce fulfillment division. We're basically just going to be making it ourselves now, you know, with the carbon dioxide tanks. So it's a liquid, transformed into five-pound block of dry ice.
Can you feel there's a need for this?
Yes, yeah, in order to keep the customer, yes. Right now, they're buying it on the open market, and they go through quite a bit, so by them bringing it in-house, they'll be able to reduce their cost.
And, Mr. Philippone, this was initially approved as a use variance back in 2003 with the site plan?
It's out of view of the site plan, but we did about a 41,000-square-foot expansion to one of the buildings out here. It was initially in four phases. Russell only built three phases, so we had to come back to the board. That was constructed in the past 12 months. It's operational right now. That was the last time we were here, one year ago.
And with the addition of this dry ice equipment, is your opinion that the property is well-suited, continues to be well-suited for the proposed overall use?
Without a doubt. It's an excellent continuation and expansion of what started in 1986 out here.
And I think you went through the negatives, no noise?
No noise.
No dust, odor?
No light, no odors.
Will it generate new employees?
No, no.
Correct. The old mushroom, one of the old mushroom houses.
It's just a minor addition outside one of the buildings, essentially.
Yeah, the recovery units need to be covered, so that's why we're just going to build a pavilion to go above it, just to, not enclosed at all, but just to keep some of the weather out. Two for each tank, so four recovery units total, yeah. Just to keep the general elements away, but it'll be an open pavilion, gazebo, whatever you want to call it.
And you've had a chance, Mr. Philippone, to review Mr. Shitey's report? Oh, we're going to do that one? Okay. Perfect.
Very good. Thank you, Chairman, board members. We did a report dated November 20th of 2023. We're in the residence agriculture zone. The proposal is for an expansion of existing non-conform use, which requires the D variance. As stated, this equipment, the tanks and the recovery units, will be placed on an existing impervious area. Therefore, stormwater management is not required, nor is any change to the impervious coverage of the area. So it meets all the bulk and setback requirements for the zone. As I stated, it's a D variance that's required for the proposed accessory use. There were some waivers that were requested, concrete curb, concrete sidewalk, and landscaping. Each one of these three waivers were previously granted during the prior applications and approvals by the board. The units, the recovery system, the mechanical equipment is kind of buffered from the existing buildings that's there and the setback from Dutch Mill Road. There's a section of the Town Code, 25396A, identifies prohibited uses, and we heard testimony from Mr. Philippone that it complies with the Franklin Township Code with regard to that, with regard to those issues. The overall height, the maximum height for these is 20 feet, and that's to the ridge of the pavilions over the recovery units, which is within our code limits. So no additional variance is required for height. We also heard testimony that there's no additional traffic to the site by virtue of this application. So, all things being considered, it's a very easy application, limited amount of engineering issues involved with it, all other requirements of previous approvals will remain in place. That's pretty much all I have. Simple and straightforward.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Any questions?
How close is this to a parking lot?
To a parking lot? Not really close at all. I mean, the nearest...
There are going to be boughs on the side where the parking lot is?
To, to right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and even these spots, we're probably going to remove, so the park, really, it comes on the other side of the building, so there's generally going to be no parking close by.
Nobody goes back there. All the times I've been there, there's no activity back there.
No, it's limited.
Is there anyone from the public that you heard?
I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Anybody who wants to be heard regarding this application?
I make a motion to approve.
Opposed by Dana Decezary. Second by Richard Glacius, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't have anything. I'll rest. I appreciate everyone's time. Again, you know, we think it's a good application, nothing major that we're requesting amended or major site plan approval, however, the board, and then this expansion of a previously approved use variance to add the dry ice equipment.
Mike, have anything you want to add? No, if, also, if you move to approve, it would be including the few waivers that were mentioned by Dana. I agree, sidewalks, curbs, and landscaping.
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion by Dana to approve the application. Second. Second by Mike Garfalo.
Okay, Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garfalo?
Yes.
Mr. Glacius?
Yes. These guys, RLS is kind of good store.
Mr. Decezary?
Yeah.
Mr. Felici?
Yes.
Mr. Hannel?
Yes.
And Chairman Gray.
Yes, I agree. They're really, all over the years, everything we've asked them to do, they have done. Changing that traffic pattern is probably one of the most difficult things. But yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is BD 2312, Ocean Food Fuels LLC.
Good evening, once again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Elias Manos, on behalf of the applicant, Ocean Food and Fuels LLC. We're here tonight with respect to block 4601, lot 1, which is 1 Harding Highway. This is located in your interchange commercial or your IC zoning district. The applicant was before the board in 2021, so two, three years ago, and at that time obtained major site plan approval and a use variance for the construction of the gas station and a retail store. The use variance trigger back in 2001 was for truck fueling. And that's what required the use variance back then. The site, and speaking to the applicant, and the two partners are here, and they can testify and answer any questions. It's about, they tell me about 95% completed. There's some asphalt.
Just one second. Mike, would you call it...
Yes, yes.
Sure, thank you. So it's my understanding it's about 95% complete. There's maybe some asphalting, septic inspection by the health department, and maybe a few minor inspections, but it's almost completed, almost ready to go. What we're here tonight for is we're seeking amended site plan approval and a use variance to, in the back, if you're facing the property, I guess, from Harding Highway, the back left-hand corner, behind a trash enclosure, 1,000-gallon propane, we'd like to add a 1,000-pound, 1,000-gallon propane storage tank. It's on a concrete pad in an enclosure, which Mr. Philippone, who was again here, can get into some more detail. We believe that this is an appropriate location. It's my understanding that the applicants have some 30 other gas stations, so they're very experienced in the gas business. And I have Mr. Philippone, our engineer and planners here tonight. We also have Doug Fro...
Frohak?
Frohak, who, what's your title, Doug?
I'm the sales manager for Allen's Oil and Propane.
Sales manager for Allen's Oil and Propane, and the two principals of the applicant, Satwinder, aka Steve Maltoni, and Dr. Bakshis Sandhu are both here tonight. Again, we'd like the first call, Mr. Philippone, as our engineer and planner, you can explain the project.
Yes. Yes, I do. Steven Philippone, professional engineer, professional planner, certified municipal engineer, Engineering Design Associates, 5 Cambridge Drive, Ocean View, New Jersey.
And, Mr. Chairman, I assume Mr. Philippone's credentials are acceptable to the board? Okay. All right, Mr. Philippone, you prepared the amended site plan for the board tonight? And did you work on the initial site plan for the applicant?
I did, yes.
Okay, and you're familiar, obviously, with the site? And you're familiar with the zoning ordinance and the requirements of the zoning ordinance?
Very much so.
Okay. It's my understanding that the prior proof site's almost completed, and now we're back, and we want to add this 1,000-gallon propane tank. Is that correct?
That's true.
Okay, can you briefly walk the board through that?
So...
And we're going to rearrange some parking spaces. It's a landscaping also.
There's really three things that we want to do. First is, we wanted to, Mr. Maltoni requested of me, as he started reviewing a propane fueling station on the tank, to see if it's reasonable to remove these landscaping nodes and place parking just across the entire frontage of the convenience store, just like you would say at any law. And it was my idea to put these landscape nodes in there, and as he started developing the site, it started to make a lot of sense. So we're requesting to remove the landscape nodes, add two parking stalls in that location every two along here. We have 16 parking stalls approved currently, and with this amendment, if approved, we'll have 16 parking stalls, so no change to the parking. The landscaping, everything you see in yellow is a change. The landscaping, the parking, so I want to show you, this is what you're looking at now is approved, what we're proposing, are the changes to the site. So what I did was I relocated, I didn't just eliminate the parking, I'm sorry, the landscaping, I replaced it, relocated it on the site. I didn't want to, it's a net, no change to landscaping. So, parked across the front, eliminated two parking stalls on the side. There's a trash enclosure that was proposed at this location. Behind the trash enclosure is going to be a propane tank, completely fenced in, six-foot-high fence. That fueling station is going to be constructed on the very side slope of a stormwater basin. So where that basin starts to drop off, we're going to build a concrete pad with a retaining wall. So the question is, how much stormwater do we lose? Like 0.2% of the stormwater for the site. I'm often criticized how large my basins are. If you've been by the site, it's an expanse of a stormwater basin, the soils are sandy, you will never see water in this stormwater basin, nor in this basin in the back. So the other drawing is part of this plan, I've been working with Doug Frohak. He is, I'm going to call him an expert, at propane tanks and fueling stations. This drawing's very large. It shows a propane tanks, 15 foot 11 inches. This is within a six-foot-high fenced-in area with all kinds of safety and security signage. As an individual, as a customer, you won't be able to fill your own tank for your gas grill. Someone will be trained. Mr. Frohak could give us a briefing on how that works. Mr. Frohak could give us a briefing on how that works. An employee will be trained. A customer is not allowed in this general area. The tank gets filled, it gets handed over to the customer, and off he goes. Again, this is a tank that'll be out of sight. I understand it's a very safe operation. Mr. Moltani, who owns 30 gas stations, I understand he has about 15 of these propane filling stations around, you know, on his gas stations. This is a little different than Wawa. If you go to Wawa, you could do an exchange of a tank. If you go to the Exxon across the street on Portstown Road, you could do an exchange. This is where the tank, you bring your empty tank, and it gets filled, you pay the attendant, and off you go. That's it. That's a general overview of the application.
And as, as it was explained to you, someone would come into the gas station with their tank, an employee would walk them out, who's trained, and fill up the tank, correct?
There's this training that goes on, there's a procedure. It's not haphazard. There's, and Doug could probably give us a quick update on how that occurs, but it's a very strict procedure they go through.
This is for 20-pound tanks and RVs?
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, it's not for the, like, the rigging station where you go get your vehicle?
No, no. These are for tanks for your propane, for your propane gas grill. So, and I just wanted to mention, this gas station was approved three years ago, and in the resolution I was reading tonight, it was part of the use variance. It frees up the traffic in Malaga. There's, you know, traffic concern, especially with trucks, large vehicles. This relieves the traffic in town. So there won't be any change to those traffic paths.
And that's going to make a big difference in Malaga?
Yeah. He's, I've gotten to know Steve pretty well the last three years. He's made a nice investment in the township, and he's really trying to do things right out there. It's, he's really putting a good effort in.
Now, the fence that's going to surround it, is it going to be vinyl fence, or, you said chain link fence, but it's going to have the, the slats that you can't see the...
I don't think, maybe Doug could answer that, but I know Dave's asked a number of questions, like, he is asked for some upgrades to the site, like, not just the silver chain link fence, could we see it in a color-coded? He'd like to see bollards painted yellow. I showed some bollards on the site plan, I think it's brown. So all of Dave's comments, we're absolutely in agreement with some of these upgrades, but, you know, maybe Doug can give a brief...
Yeah, Mr. Frohak, why don't you come up and be sworn? Because I think you probably are in a better position to answer some of the questions, and you can talk about the safety and all that.
Please, you swear to tell the truth about the test rate you're going to give?
I do.
Name and address, please, and I guess your credentials.
Douglas Frohak, 19 Hollyberry Lane, Mooremore, New Jersey. And I'm the sales and marketing manager for Allen's Oil and Propane.
Thank you.
Why don't you explain, what exactly does your job entail? Why don't you start with that?
Well, as far, as far as this is concerned, what I do is I do all the initial layout, survey to find out if, if the refill station can even be installed. And it's, it's about safety from the, from the, really from the first step to the last step. If it can be done safely, then we figure out a way to get it done safely. If it can't be done safely, then I would tell the customer, we can't do it, and we would move on. This is what the refill station itself looks like. That's a completed one. That's at Steve's, one of Steve's locations in Sicklerville. And this one would look almost identical, and probably just identical. It's a 1,000 gallon propane refill station where we fill other propane tanks in the area. So it could be for 20-pound tanks, camper tanks, could be motorhome tanks, the driver can actually pull right up next to it. But all of the, some of the safety questions you had asked about, like the chain link fence, everything is dictated by the state jurisdiction. So Steve, when we have another engineer involved, they, they put together everything according to the requirements of the state, and of course, with the local zoning requirements. And then every step of the, of the construction is overseen by the state OP Gas Unit. So we put the, put the bollards in. I'll oversee the bollards. The state inspector comes out, and he inspects the holes before the bollards go in. So it's really strictly regulated. There's a scale that's certified by weights and measures. And by the way, when, when someone comes in and fills a tank, if you have a 20-pound tank, they actually put 20 pounds in it. When you get it on the exchange racks, those tanks are only filled to 15 pounds. So if you were carrying one, carrying the other, you'd be walking crooked. By way of safety...
I'm going to, not to interrupt you, but, and speaking to the solicitor, we'll mark this photo as A1. Mr. Filippone, were these all submitted with the application, or are there those?
They were.
Okay.
Oh, they were?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if they were colored.
Can't screen that fence, then?
It's a good question. You can't because you're not allowed to have any kind of combustibles on it. So it can't be vinyl, it's got to be galvanized.
It's going to be colored, right? Dave had something in his report, he said galvanized.
The vinyl coated typically, and if you get like a black...
Vinyl coated, yeah.
You say you can have combustibles?
Right.
In the process, someone would come in, go into the store with their empty propane tank?
Someone would, would notify, they would notify the attendant that they want to fill the tank. The attendant would take the tank into the, into the gauge, into the cage, and fill it and give it back to them.
How long does it take to fill?
Five minutes.
I don't have anything further for Mr. Frohak. He's, he's obviously the one that can answer some of the questions if the board has any additional questions.
Yes.
How long does it take to train somebody for this fence? I'm assuming that they care.
That's true. Most of the, most of the people that we're training have already had some experience, but it's, it's about an hour, and there's a certification that is approved by the state. When someone is trained, and we do the training, so along the line, we go through the process. The state approves every step of it. They approve it before it goes in, they approve the site, they approve it after we install it. We have to have certificates on hand for each of the, each of the operators, each of the attendants. They're not allowed to touch that refill station unless they're trained and certified by us. And the training certificates are kept on hand. When the project is completed, the state inspector will come in and he'll, he'll go through a very detailed checklist. And at the end of that, they'll put a sticker on it. Indicating that it's met all of, all of the requirements. And they, the state actually issues the construction permits, it's not done under local jurisdiction, because they'll, they'll be watching every single step of it. And then they inspect it every year. So if there's any deficiencies, we're notified of that. The station, the equipment actually belongs to Allen's. So we're notified if there's any deficiencies, and we have to send somebody out there promptly to make sure that they're taken care of. So it's very, very detailed and very tightly regulated.
What do the waters and paint of it look like?
100-pounders, 100-pound tanks, construction cylinders. They fill them on the scale.
They function the same way as a smaller tank, though, correct?
They do.
If they remove those 100-pound tanks, you can't pick that up, correct? They don't pick it up. How's that going to shift?
They, they can put it on the scale. They can also fill them according to the, by the bleeder, too. But they do, they do go on the scale. They kind of wiggle them on there.
Don't have a gauge?
Not, not those tanks. The tanks that have gauges aren't really carried around. There's the smallest tank with a gauge would be a 200-pound tank, which would be about 300 pounds full.
Where's the Philtrup? Where do you like my partner come today?
Philtrup will park adjacent to the refill, to the refill area, and they pull a tank out, just like an oil, a hose out, just like an oil tank would. And they could be there maybe 10 or 15 minutes filling the tank.
They're going to be below the rest of the traffic?
No.
This is, this is a very generous, so the way this works is, this is where vehicles, regular passenger cars, pickup trucks will fill. This is where trucks could actually fill. And this is a very generous, these turning radiuses, these areas are very generous. So this is where the propane tank filling station is.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Our report was November 22, 2023. The company has a great technical comment. This is a D variance we're hearing tonight, because this is an expansion of a, it's just not performing use. Propane tanks are not specifically permitted in this zone. The propane tank area will be outside, on the other side of the curb, located behind the trash enclosure. We wanted some testimony on the operations of the proposed propane fueling activity, which we heard. Will the, will the hours of operation, are there any specific hours of operation for the propane tank fueling? What's the hours of operation for the site?
Come on up. We'll have to, we'll have to get you sworn, Mr. Moltani. Just your name and address.
Do you want to tell the truth about the test rate you're going to give?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, correct? Satvinder Moltani, 8 Lorry Drive, New Jersey.
Thank you. What are the hours of operation for the overall site, the convenience store and the vehicle fueling?
We open at like a 4:00 AM to 12:00.
Are there different hours for the propane fueling?
Yes.
What are they?
Like, morning, 6:00 AM to like 6:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 6:00 PM?
Not dark time, not, not in dark.
Daylight hours?
Daylight hours.
Will you be a separate attendant for the propane tanks?
Same attendant.
Same attendant?
Yes.
Our parking regulations are based upon number of attendants for fueling areas. So I guess, we were approved for 16 parking spaces, and that was based upon a certain amount of attendants for the gasoline and diesel fueling?
Yes.
But your testimony is that you won't be another attendant for the propane?
No, sir.
So therefore, the existing parking is, is still acceptable? Since there's no additional parking?
Yes.
By our ordinance?
Mr. Moltani, how many gas stations do you operate?
We don't operate, like, on 30 stations.
How many have propane?
15.
So you have experience in this, correct?
Yes, we do.
Sir, is there any kind of outside monitoring for leaks?
On the leak?
Outside monitoring, leaks? And outside monitoring?
I think...
Does the state do anything?
This, they're not, it's not, it's not coming up, right? It's not doing anything. I hope this is a statement. Every year.
The state inspects it every year. They'll be inspecting it several times once under construction.
Is that loud enough for you?
I didn't hear it. Yeah, there, there, you're listening. Yeah. There's nothing for leaks? No leak? No specific leak there?
No specific leak monitoring? If there was ever a leak, it stinks. The propane has a chemical added to it called ethylmercapton. There's no way there would ever be any kind of a significant leak without somebody knowing about it. And if that was the case...
Then the emergency shut off, they can do that, right? If that case, we shut off emergency switch. There's a, required by state.
Emergency switch?
Yes. By the building.
There's an emergency stop by the building. The state requires, they call it an E-stop, emergency stop switch, between 20 and 100 feet, clearly visible from the propane refill station. So if there was ever any kind of emergency, all someone has to do is hit that button, and that's it, everything's shut down. Can you tell us some more about the, the scale shed? What's that going to look like? What's it constructed out of? Because that's going to be located adjacent to the propane tank in the fenced area. Yes. It's actually, it's actually, it's actually all metal. And we have them, we have them fabricated ourselves. That'll be all metal, bolted down, the scale is inside there, and the hose and the switch that operates, it goes right outside, right outside that little scale enclosure. And that's a color, as opposed to just galvanized metal? It's blue. It's going to look just like that, yep. I guess that was my question. Mark that A1.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think we did mark, I should have said that. A1 is the photograph of, where is that, up north?
That is, that is Mr. Moltani's refill station in Sicklerville, on Sicklerville Road.
Not up north, but Sicklerville.
Will there be any?
Sort of, yeah, I guess.
Well...
I think there is. My wife needs glasses up there. It's all, it's all the gallons.
So is there any additional lighting that's proposed as part of this propane refill, refill
We have parking lot lights that are adequate. I think Dave was saying, within this enclosure, will there be lighting? And Mr. Moltani said daylight hours, but will there be any safety lights inside this place?
It's not required by the state.
They're parking light a check by the, okay.
So the, the site lighting that's been previously proposed and approved, that's any of your stalling, is sufficient for your operation?
I believe so.
No additional light?
No additional light.
That's what I want to know. Let's go back to, make sure I understand. The fence that goes around this has to, by law, be galvanized and not coated? Strictly a galvanized fence? According to the state, six-foot galvanized fence. Correct, for safety. But for aesthetics, it can't be green or black vinyl coated, galvanized? They don't want combustibles within 10 feet. And the vinyl coating on the fence is considered combustible? Yes. Okay. Just wanted to be clear, because it's just plain galvanized fence. Are there any additional signs going to be proposed for the sale of the propane? I understand all the safety signs that are mounted on and around this area. Are there additional signage advertising the sale of propane?
I think they give a bar. Yes, it is, like a curb sign, like you guys provide us.
There's normally a small sign that says propane refill station.
Yeah.
I'll place that on a perfected plan.
That'd be good? Is it going to be on A2?
It's not on the plan.
No, it's a...
No, it's a good question. It's, whatever that detail is, if you could provide it to me, and how large is it? It's, it's just a small...
It's smaller, might be two by three feet.
And it has the, sort of the picture of a tank, and it says fill...
Yeah, there's picture of the tank, you know, that's...
So you're not proposing in addition to your main sign?
No.
Okay.
No.
This is a...
So we have two street frontages. Are you talking about placing one in each street frontage, or just one along Harding Highway, along 40?
One.
One on each side is good, but usually, we don't show on the plan before any other document.
I think they want to see it on the plan.
That's fine.
If I get the detail out, I'll edit it.
Because the previous approval maxed out the signage. I'm just wondering if we need relief to get you what you need. What kind of sign is it?
Is there a sign on this one?
Yes. Yes, let me see.
It's, it's along the curb. Okay, I just wanted to make sure the board understood.
Yeah, yard sign.
It's like a yard sign.
Yard sign, yes. Like a yard sign.
All right. What I'm potentially hearing is, we may need variance relief for some small additional signage.
You think it's on the fence?
No, we know about being by the curb.
He's going to place it up by the...
On the building, or something like that?
I was wondering if you were making a wholesale change to the main sign? So you're not, you're putting a little yard sign somewhere?
Yes.
You can talk to zoning about that.
Okay.
I think we'll include that. If this is granted and included in the resolution, so that you have a yard sign? It was a yard sign, two by two? I don't know what the size is.
I did two by...
Probably two by three.
Two by three? Yeah.
And there's, ask for two of them?
Yes.
What are the questions I have? So there's no net change to landscaping? You're moving the landscaping around? You're removing the landscaping from the front of the convenience store and putting more parking spaces at the store instead of somewhat remote? Is that correct? That's exactly correct. So I wasn't here for the original approval. I don't know about that, you know, if the landscaping in front of the store was a requirement or something that Mr. Filippone is... We have five landscape architects in our office, and they really go at it with the landscaping. And they came up with, and I never paid attention, they had these landscape dudes. Mr. Moltani said, I have 30 gas stations. I'd really like to get, you know, remove that. So that's how that transpired. Everybody's going to be trampling. From a convenience store perspective, it's nice to be able to, they didn't get out, have all the parking as close to the door as possible. And rather than just saying, okay, we're going to remove it, I said to, I decided, let's keep the total exact plant and relocate them on site. And that's what you see. Everything in green is our relocated plantings that I removed from the frontage of the site. Plans should show the location of the retaining wall and how it's going to be trucked. Is that through the backside of it, where it's adjacent to the store management basin, correct? There's part of this fueling station that's on the start of the side slope for this basin back here. It needs a retaining wall. I'll show the increase in impervious coverage and give you the calculation or the zoning chart amendment that you're requesting in your report. And the only other thing, the plans had said that the bollards adjacent to this would be brown, recommending. I did notice someplace else on the plans it says yellow. So if you could clarify that on the plans, that there'll be yellow bollards so that we can see them. They have to be yellow?
They have to be yellow.
Okay. Just correct the plans and I'm good with that. I will do that. Brown. Brown. That's all I have. Pretty straightforward.
Good job. Any questions to the end of the year?
Yes, sir. There is. He's just not done with the landscaping. You know, we're at the wrong time of year.
Yes.
He's got a lot of work to do with the landscaping.
But there is going to be mold.
There is going to be mold.
Yes. No stones. Just mold. No stone, just mold.
Wow, I don't like mold. I mean, you got, we go to ten hole fire here.
Okay.
So you like stone?
I'm a big one. The Dollar General wasn't supposed to have molten, so put it in. But it's from spontaneous combustion and stuff in cigarettes.
Okay, so we can change it. Just put a stone, no problem, that's fine.
You're good with that?
No, that's fine.
You seemed hesitant. You're okay with this stuff?
That's fine. That's fine.
This is from the fire department?
Yes, that's fine. That's fine, no problem. We can change it.
Okay.
Why don't you tell the board, how close are you to being, putting the propane aside, the overall?
We almost done it. We can just, you know, the 280 black top surface is left, maybe this week it will be done.
Something further? All right, so who opened up the public, the motion?
I make a vote, motion, we open up the public.
Second amendment, the Senator, second place, for whole hall of favor, I oppose. Anyone from the public back here regarding this? Raise your hand, please. You swear to tell the truth on the test suite you're going to give?
I do.
Say your name and address, correct.
Dave Marshall, 67, New Road, Malaga. Nothing opposed to the actual site with the propane, as long as they're following all the guidelines. It's supposed to be a leak detector seems natural to me, but obviously if the state doesn't require it, that's a little different. I do have a question in reference to the landscaping. The stones are a good idea because I live near the Dollar Store. I see what happens there with that mulch. The Dollar Store, when that was brought in, it had a two-year limit that the landscape had to be maintained. Soon as two years ended, it went to trash. It still is, it's horrendous. Is there any type of requirement or time limit on how long they have to maintain the property? I understand, but our township signed off on that. Oh, I know that, and that was why I didn't want it there, but it's got put there anyway.
I shouldn't be jumping in. There's a bond, there's going to be a bond.
Right.
For two years.
I understand that, but what happens after that?
You have a zoning officer that could...
That doesn't ever show up?
No, no.
I'm sorry, but that's the truth. I'm sorry, but that's the reality of it. We've lost three or four of them over the last five years. We have a part-time one now who never comes out, you know, when you call them. So this is why I'm asking, as a resident. You know, is there anything that can be changed? Okay, I understand, anything that can be done for a time limit, though. I don't know if it can or not, I'm asking.
I just want to say, there's, Mr. Moltani, I knew we got carried away with the landscaping. There's $100,000 worth of landscaping on this property. He wants to make sure it survives.
Oh, I would love to see that.
Yeah, it's going to, when this matures, you know, you're going to see it. We tried to buffer this big stormwater basin.
Oh, I like the way it's going. I'm not complaining with the way it looks.
Yeah.
I'm just asking about longer term. I mean, you look unfortunate at some of the business we have. After that two-year, they get neglected. I mean, they do. And I'd like to see it, something done to help our township appear better for a longer period of time.
I'll say one thing, he's there, I mean, he is very actively involved.
Listen, we spend over a thousand dollars on this landscape. We have to maintain that, you know. Plus, we have our sprinkler system, well, everything is already, you know, start, done already, that sprinkler system. It has to be maintained.
And I appreciate that, and I hope you do.
Yes.
But I was also told that the Dollar Store would maintain theirs. And that was brought up by some of the board members, and it didn't.
You know, plus, we have a business wise, it's going to look good.
I understand.
We maintain that. We do maintain.
I advise all the other stations that are maintained.
And that's what I hope for. I'm just asking, as a resident, if anything can be done for a longer term.
Yeah.
Keep going to township meetings and asking that for enforcement.
I have for, I understand that, but that's, I mean, you probably have heard enough about me. I've been to every township meeting and talked about it at every meeting, and it falls on deaf ears. That's why I'm asking here, hoping that there's a little bit more interest in protecting a resident. That's why I brought it up here at this point in time. Okay, that's why I was asking, and I don't know if you could or not, I just was hoping. Thank you.
I make a vote, we close the public.
If there's no additional questions, I'll rest. We think it's a straightforward application. We hope the board looks favorably on it.
Three waivers?
That's right, I'm sorry. We had the sign, which we added, though it...
Right. Your sign, you want to include.
But it's essentially the...
Two, two by threes, right?
Right. It's the expansion of a previously approved use that becomes a non-performing use in the actual, if it's an essential use, it's still on permitted use. I don't think there's any other way of it.
Is there a second?
Mr. Cash?
Yes.
Mr. Garfalo?
Yes.
Mr. Glazias?
Yes.
Mr. Decezary?
Yes.
Mr. Felizi? Mr. Hallow?
Yes.
And Chairman Grayton?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the patience and time tonight. I appreciate it.
The resolution?
As far as applications? Yes, we have the two resolutions, Michael Ramsey on Sunny Avenue, Modern Subdivision and Youth Variance. Was an eye, that was one, came back two times, we trusted verified. And you have that resolution. And the JWJ Investors LLC, which will be site standard, various improved conditions.
I make a vote, we approve this.
Yes. Yeah, one thing. Starting in February, we are going to let you know. I will no longer be making those few packets that you have in front of you. Takes at least a day out of my time to do that. I will be sending everyone an email. It will have a link to Dropbox. You'll click on the link, and all the documentation you'll need will be in there, including site plans, surveys, all that kind of stuff.
You going to print them out?
If you would to, you can. If not, you can't.
It's not going to be able to print that out?
Look at it.
Your wide format printer can print that, so you'll be able to look at that.
But you will be able to print out any documents that you feel you're going to need for the meeting and bring them with you. If you have an issue, give me a call at the office and let me know, and we'll try and figure something out.
And I'm sure if someone on the board needs a set of plans, we can raise that.
Yes. I don't see why not. We've had applicants do it before, so I think if I can hook this computer up to that, then we should be able to.
If you could make that happen, that we would be hearing about this for a long time, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Better than the plan.
Yeah, you'd be able to see it clearer. Yeah, I can come over here one day and play around with it and see how good I can get it up there. I don't see why not. Is that okay?
Another rule is email that they can look at while they're here.
Yes. Yeah, you can bring it in a voice. A lot of the engineers and applicants are submitting their applications electronically, which is amazing and great. I don't have any room to keep all this stuff. I have a very small office and like four other jobs, so there's not a whole lot of room for me to keep all this. And archives is full. It's down the hall here, and every filing cabinet is full. So we use a program called eBridge, and I scan everything, and it's all archived electronically anyway. It'll make everything a lot easier. So that will start in February.
Okay, anything else, any correspondence? Mike, anything?
No, no need for it.
No need for closing, then it's a motion to adjourn. Second, Mike Garfalo, favor, I oppose. Meeting adjourned.